I want to thank you all for taking time today to participate in this hearing. The department is holding this hearing on the proposed discontinuation of the pediatric service at Health Alliance Clinton-Lemonster campus and will accept comments in regard to the discontinuation of the cardiac pulmonary rehabilitation at Lemonster Campus and outpatient urgent care at the hospital's Burbank campus. We are holding this hearing to provide the community with an opportunity to comment on the proposed closure. This hearing is a public forum for the presentation of any comments that may be relevant to the department's consideration of this matter. Following this hearing, the department will make a determination as to whether the service to be discontinued is necessary for preserving access and health status in the hospital service area. The department will consider the evidence presented at this hearing, the current utilization of the service, the capacity of alternate sites to provide the service, and other relevant information available to the department. The department will make its determination within 15 days of today's hearing. If the department finds that the service to be discontinued is necessary for preserving access and health status, the department will require the hospital to submit a plan for assuring access to the service within 15 calendar days of the department's finding. The plan which the hospital submits will be reviewed by the department. The department will respond to the hospital in writing with either its approval or with written comments to which the hospital must respond. We will begin this hearing with a brief presentation from the hospital regarding the proposed discontinuation of services. Following the hospital's presentation, we will provide an opportunity for elected officials from the community to comment on the proposal and then begin calling on those individuals who have requested to speak this evening. I'll be calling speakers by name from the sign-in sheets we have collected. If you have not already signed in and would like to speak, there will be an opportunity to do so when we have called those names on the list. We ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes in order that we have an opportunity to hear from all who have comments or concerns. You are welcome to leave a copy of your remarks here at the table at the end of your testimony. At this time, I will ask the hospital to make its opening presentation.
My name is Deborah Weymouth and I am president and CEO of UMass Memorial Health Alliance Clinton Hospital. I am here today to present the hospital's plan to discontinue its inpatient pediatric service and its outpatient cardiac and pulmonary rehab services at our Lemonster campus, as well as the urgent care service at the Burbank campus in Pittsburgh. I'd like to begin by thanking the Department of Public Health for holding this public hearing this evening and for members of the audience for attending and showing their interest in the healthcare needs of the community. The hospital is committed to providing the highest quality of healthcare services to a broad population that we serve. We're especially proud to be part of the healthcare system and its community of caregivers who are committed to providing care for underserved, including the uninsured and underinsured. The state's latest Center for Health Information Analysis data confirms that UMass Memorial Healthcare Hospitals serve a significantly greater share of Medicaid and Medicare patients than other healthcare organizations in the region. As you may be aware, for the last three years, the utilization data shows very low patient volume at each of these services, which means that the patient community is not choosing to obtain these services at the Lemonster or Burbank campuses. Therefore, after great deliberation, the hospital determined that the services identified today should be discontinued, and I will address each of the services. Inpatient pediatric service. The pediatric service in Lemonster is an 11-bed inpatient unit. The service covers an average daily census of approximately one patient. In fiscal year 2017, it was less than one patient. Unsurprisingly, this low utilization coincides with an accelerated decline in the number of patient discharges from the service. The patient discharges dropped by approximately 50 discharges over the last three years. Accordingly, the low patient volume combined with the significant decline in patient discharges has signaled the hospital that there is no longer a demand for the pediatric service, and it has concluded that the service should be closed. Following the closure of the pediatric service, the hospital will refer patients requiring inpatient pediatric care to other facilities within the service area. These facilities include Haywood Hospital, Emerson Hospital, and UMass Memorial Medical Center, which are all within a half hour or less of the hospital's Lemonster campus, and all of which have adequate capacity to provide inpatient care for pediatric patients. To help alleviate any concerns and avoid confusion, the hospital emphasizes that it will be able to continue to provide care and treatment for pediatric patients. The hospital has a pediatric hospitalist-physician service that is onsite at the Lemonster campus 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They provide consultation to pediatric patients and their families that present to the emergency department. To that point, and to be very clear, our emergency departments at both Lemonster and Clinton have currently and will continue to have pediatric-trained clinicians. Should any emergency occur, the best choice is always the emergency department, any day and every day. Pediatric patients who utilize the emergency department or a surgical service will have all of their consultation care needs met by the pediatric hospitalists during the course of their care. Patients needing inpatient care thereafter will be appropriately transferred in accordance with the hospital's procedures and the applicable laws. Cardiac and pulmonary rehab services. The outpatient cardiac and pulmonary rehab service at the Lemonster campus also has a very low patient volume. Over the past few years, the average daily visits for cardiac rehab has consistently been less than 10 patients, and at times as low as six. Pulmonary rehab has even less, with under four patients per day to its service. Therefore, in light of such little demand for these services, the hospital has decided to close the service. However, it is our belief that access will not be negatively impacted, as there are alternative facilities in the hospital's service area where patients can be referred, including UMass Memorial Marlborough Hospital, which has capacity to provide such services. In addition, the hospital is planning to establish cardiac rehab services at our Burbank campus in Pittsburgh and at our Clinton campus. Urgent care service. Finally, the other service that will be discontinued is the urgent care service at the Burbank campus in Pittsburgh. The hospital is aware that the Pittsburgh City Council has expressed its opposition to the closure, and we certainly appreciate their comments. However, the data plainly shows that patients are moving away from this particular service location. The average volume for urgent care visits has declined steadily year over year the last three years. Data from 2015 to 2017 reveals that usage has dropped significantly. Visits per day dropped by 10, which represents a decline of approximately 26 percent. The hospital believes that the loss in demand for the urgent care service at Burbank campus is due to the variety of other urgent care providers available to patients in close proximity to the Burbank campus. The hospital itself also operates an urgent care site less than five miles away, which is known as Urgent Care Lemonster. In addition, Health Alliance-Fitchburg Family Practice, located on the Burbank campus, has the ability to treat unscheduled walk-in patients. And finally, CareWell, UMass Memorial Urgent Care, also located less than three miles from the Burbank campus. Consequently, the urgent care service at the Burbank campus is duplicative of other urgent cares and walk-in services available in the immediate area, and therefore not necessary at this location. I would like to take a moment to express that the hospital understands that patients may have concerns about the closure of such services, and that we did not come to this decision lightly. In the reality for the hospital, if not for all hospitals in the state of Massachusetts, is that in order to survive in today's increasingly challenging healthcare environment, it must respond to the needs of the healthcare market, including shifting demographics and the will of the state and federal policymakers, as well as the public. In short, we will do everything to achieve healthcare goals and initiatives promoted by the state and to preserve access to those services that patients need and want the most. With very low and declining utilization rates, along with the availability of alternative sites and providers, these services do not meaningfully serve the healthcare needs of the patient population. Finally, on behalf of the hospital, its leadership, and clinical community, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. We look forward to working with the Department of Public Health and the patient community as we continue our mission to provide the best quality care to Clinton, Lemonster, Pittsburgh, and our surrounding communities. Thank you again for coming this evening.
Our first speaker will be Representative Stephen Hay, followed by Representative Natalie Higgins.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief. To me, this is pretty simple. DPH has a choice. They can let Health Alliance determine what are essential services for the residents of our area, or they can let the residents and the nurses and the doctors determine what are essential services for the residents in our area. That's what this is about. My parents taught me something a long time ago, that the difference between doing what you can do and doing what you should do. This is a perfect example of that. I believe Health Alliance can, because they'll most likely get the authority to do that from the state, shut these services down. Should they shut these services down? Absolutely not. We had Ms. Weymouth get up here and give us a lot of facts and a lot of figures, and she presented real well, and we will have doctors and nurses and other people get up and give you their facts and their figures. The question is, whose rights, whose needs are they going to listen to? It's the people who live in this town. It's the people who live in this district. It's particularly the people who are marginalized, people who don't have transportation, people who don't have healthcare coverage, that need to be taken care of, and we have a responsibility, and DPH has a responsibility, to make sure that continues. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. My name is Natalie Higgins. I'm the state representative for the 4th Worcester District, which is the city of Lemonster. And I've lived in Lemonster my whole life for the last 30 years, and I'm really proud to be from the second-largest city in central Mass and a gateway city. And I think that that brings a lot of really important things to our community, but also a lot of needs. And something that I heard recurring through these discussions is that these other services exist nearby, and I'm hearing Worcester and Marlborough, and we don't have the luxury of being in a major city like Boston and have public transportation for so many of our community members. They can't get to Marlborough or Worcester to seek services. And I just want to share a couple of stories that I've heard, and honestly, a personal experience. Representative Naughton, I saw him in the back. When we heard that the Health Alliance would be acquiring Clinton Hospital, it gave me some hope, selfishly, that Lemonster was going to be okay. Maybe worst-case scenario, you were going to lose some services there, but Lemonster was going to be okay. And this is so much worse. Like, we're all losing our services and seeing them being put into bigger cities that we have less access to. And when I inquired for more information about the PD unit, I get it, one person a day, one patient a day, that's really low, but in recent times, the highest has been five at one time in that unit. So those are five families that could be struggling to figure out where to get their services from at one time. And often, for families, these are recurring emergencies. I have a friend that I grew up with who spent the first 18 months of her child's life in and out of this unit because of emergencies. And I just have another family friend whose husband had a heart attack, and luckily was close enough to Lemonster Hospital, drove himself there, didn't know what was going on, survived the heart attack, and has struggled to find adequate cardiac rehab services nearby. And I worry that this is going to get worse. And so I just want to really urge DPH to consider kind of this continuing story of eroding of services in central Mass from this PD unit, the Burbank Urgent Care, the cardiac rehab, before that Plumley Village, the endoscopy services at Clinton Hospital. This is a nonprofit community hospital system, and I'm worried about what we're going to have left. And just last year, at the beginning of my first term, I was in Worcester talking about the closure of 13 of 27 inpatient mental health beds. And that has had an impact in needs in our emergency rooms, and now we're talking about potentially monitoring our kids in our emergency rooms and taking up more space that is needed for folks who are having emergencies. So I just hope you will consider, and I'm so thankful for everyone who is taking the time to get up and speak. I know that this can be really intimidating in this larger of a space. So thank you for being here.
Our next speaker will be Representative Hank Naughton, followed by Mayor Stephen D. Natale.
Members of the panel, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. And I too will be brief, because I think what's much more important this evening than hearing ourselves, those of us that have been committed to public service, like my colleagues in the legislature and city councilors, and my dear friend, the mayor of Pittsburgh, is to hear the people that are here. But I will say, in agreement with my colleague, the gentle lady from Lemonster, the town of Clinton gives many people hope. It's led the way for 150 years, the bright and shining star that is the top of Worcester It's produced great people, it's produced great doctors, it's produced great nurses, it's produced great healthcare professionals. And for years, at Clinton Hospital, there were, I think there was a nursing school, there was a birthing center. My four sisters were born there. I was not. I was always the different one. They had to take me into Worcester to Hahneman Hospital to be born. But there are still deep memories of that community leader in the town of Clinton and what it did, the services it provided, through generation after generation after generation, and it's still there. And I know those same memories exist in the people of Pittsburgh with Burbank and the people of Lemonster with Lemonster Hospital. So you see, we are kind of a unique area up here. We're proud. It's often overlooked, but north Worcester County is an incredible place to live with incredible people and incredible quality of life, and a lot of that's been the ability to provide services to each other, be they educational services, such as our great school departments and what we do, or Pittsburgh State University, or Mount Wauchoa Community College, other state services that are provided, and city and town services that are provided in this, but our healthcare services. We've always been able to depend on each other. We've always been able to stay close to home for the services provided to our neighbors, to our sons and daughters, our mothers and fathers, our brothers and sisters. And what's happening here, and we get it, we get the changes going on in the healthcare industry, in the provision of healthcare, and the costs, the incredible costs, and the changes that have come on both the federal and state level in reimbursements. But there's got to be a better way, if we all work together, to be able to continue to provide an equilibrium of services so that we don't have to go to Worcester, we don't have to go to Marlborough, we don't have to go to Boston. There's got to be a way that we can continue to take care of each other, as we always have, by working together in good faith, elected officials, hospital administrators, the general public. We don't know. We want to believe, we want to be helpful. We've participated in the community group that was set up by Clinton Hospital to try to find these answers. A lot of great people have stepped up, but we just, I guess we just don't understand some of the changes and why certain services, because what we have here, we have a monopoly here in north Worcester County, pretty much, with the exception of Up and Gardner, all of our healthcare services pretty much come from one provider. So we don't feel like we're necessarily in a strong position unless we get your help to be able to step our feet. So we'd like to understand why, you know, we've all heard stories and we all remember, and I'll wrap up very, very quickly, of Hahneman Hospital where I was born, Holden Hospital, Worcester City Hospital, all of these entities that are gone. And we get it, we get it. We're intelligent people up here, even though I think sometimes we're looked at like flyover country. We get it. But we want to keep getting it. We want to keep getting our services, and we want to be able to take care of our parents and our children, and those of us that age, you know, those of us that probably have more birthdays behind us than ahead of us, want to be able to know that we can go close to home when the time comes when we need that assistance, or we can bring our spouse or our siblings. This is a special part of the Commonwealth, and I know I haven't been incredibly specific, but I do have some written testimony, and I'm going to, we'll turn it into your committee, that we ask you to take into account, because, you know, we don't want to let this go. We want to fight hard to keep what we have, to keep these services, and we will. These people don't have a lot materially, but they're the richest people I've ever met in my life, in their spirit, in their camaraderie, and how much they care for each other, and we want to keep doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the people who were attending this evening, taking the time out of your day. Also, our thanks from the people of the city of Pittsburgh, to the Department of Public Health, and to all those individuals that are partners with myself in public service and have been for a number of years. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my strong opposition to all of UMass Memorial Health Alliances' proposed discontinuation of services at the Lemonster and Burbank Health Alliances campuses. As a former legislator and now as the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, I have witnessed UMass Health Alliance removing service after service from the residents in the city of People deserve access to their healthcare where they live. I can't help but conclude that UMass Memorial is abandoning the people in our communities, knowing full well that they have no choice in where they receive their care. Healthcare services available to our local community are being eroded or eliminated in the interest of further boosting profits for UMass Memorial Healthcare Corporate. I am very concerned about the impact this will have on our families. Those are the families in the city of Pittsburgh, particularly those that are most marginalized, who lack the resources and access to transportation to travel long distances for needed care. The closing of a pediatric unit in Lemonster will result in very sick children experiencing delayed access to acute care, and children being boarded in the emergency department, and in children being shipped to Worcester for care that they could and should receive here in this community. We are going to see a repeat of what happened with the closing of the mental health unit at Pittsburgh's Burbank campus in 2010. UMass Health Alliance began shifting admissions from Burbank's unit to their Worcester inpatient units into their community health-linked facilities. They drove down the census so that they could say the volume had decreased and couldn't justify staying open. They created an eight-bed behavioral health observation unit in the Lemonster Hospital ER, and that was an abject failure. The ER at Lemonster Hospital was, as we predicted, overwhelmed with patients seeking inpatient mental health care. And last year in Worcester, they closed 13 of their 27 inpatient mental health beds and converted them to higher-proffiting medical-surgical beds. Area emergency rooms have since been swamped with mental health patients in need and waiting for appropriate inpatient mental health care. The closure of the Burbank Urgent Care Center is unjustifiable, just as the closing of the mental health unit was in 2010. UMMHC has now opened two new profit-centered urgent care centers, which have undoubtedly drained services from the Burbank's urgent care center. They appear to be conveying to the Pittsburgh community that they are intent on creating vehicles that generate the most profit versus ensuring that the most marginalized and need and vulnerable have access to the healthcare they need where they live. They want to cut the Burbank Urgent Care Service and force patients to their CareWell and other profiting entities where patients are required to produce a credit card in some form of payment in order to receive care. When researching their financials, transparency comes into question. Although they are reporting inadherence to the law, UMass reports at the group level. However, data is not available at the division level. That's where the problem lies. Nonprofit UMass Memorial Health Alliance have requirements under their community benefits agreements, and they must be held accountable to their commitment to our community. In closing, I submit to you that I recognize the importance of maintaining a sound fiscal posture. However, the challenge that we hope UMass will assume is balancing the ledger with the importance of providing access to healthcare in the spirit and focus that is a true community hospital. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. When researching their financials, transparency comes into question. Although they are reporting inadherence to the law, UMass reports at the group level. However, data is not available at the division level. That's where the problem lies. Nonprofit UMass Memorial Health Alliance have requirements under their community benefits agreements, and they must be held accountable to their commitment to our community. In closing, I submit to you that I recognize the importance of maintaining a sound fiscal posture. However, the challenge that we hope UMass will assume is balancing the ledger with the importance of providing access to healthcare in the spirit and focus that is a true community hospital. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Members of the Department of Public Health, thank you for being here this evening. Members of the public and fellow elected officials, thank you for joining us here and speaking out against the proposed consolidation of healthcare services and the closing of Burbank Hospital. Healthcare is a right, not a privilege. Why then are we standing here for the third time in two decades pleading against the consolidation of services and the closure of facilities in Fitchburg and in the North Central community? We're a poor community, sure. We have a large first-generation population. It's not a disparaging comment, it's true. What's convenient for you and I is essential, it's critical, for many. I'm fortunate, I can take my elderly mother to the hospital, I can bring her in the car. For many in our community, and for many who live in Ward 4, the ward I represented, home to Burbank's campus, they do not have that luxury. They depend on that facility. That is essential to them. That's what you're evaluating, right? Essential services? Suppose it's in the eye of the beholder. What's essential? Is a bed for one child a day essential? Would be for you if that was your child. If you were one of three dozen a day who needed to get up to Burbank to receive urgent care, that would be urgent to you too. But if instead you had to wait out at a bus stop for an hour and take a half an hour bus ride to urgent care, you'd feel differently. So regardless of socioeconomics, healthcare is a right, not a privilege. Why then do we, do we always lose access to affordable healthcare in our region? Why is it always us who must pay? This is a nonprofit, it's a community-based organization. I heard that earlier from representatives of the hospital. Why then are they inflicting their will on the community and not engaging us? I found out from the Sentinel and Enterprise before I found out from the hospital what they were doing. Healthcare is a right, not a privilege. Massachusetts is home to the greatest healthcare delivery that the world has seen. But that's worthless if you can't access it. You can't get to it and you can't afford it, what good does that do for you? I urge the Department of Public Health to support community hospitals and support community of North Central Massachusetts in keeping our facilities open.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you, Department of Public Health officials, for coming out for this important hearing. And thank you, everybody here, for taking time out of your busy schedules and daily life to come out and talk about this very important issue. My name is Sue Shalafou Zephyr. I'm a city councillor-at-large here in the City of Lemonster, and I also am executive director of Ginny's Helping Hand. We are a nonprofit food pantry agency in Lemonster, and I know intimately, I know very well, the population, the Medicaid population, the uninsured population, the population that is going to be most affected by these changes. So just a couple of points I wanted to make. The closure of urgent care in Fitchburg will absolutely have a serious impact on the people that utilize that service. Census is going down, I don't know why that is, but cost and transportation are absolutely true challenges that people who use that service will be facing. A 30-minute bus ride, a 20-minute bus ride, sounds simple, sounds easy, but again, like other folks have said, that is not. Not simple when you're trying to lug a little sick child to urgent care because that's your go-to medical facility. It's no joke, it's not easy. Elimination of pediatric beds, that will, you know, and Mr. Kuschmerich, I think, said it very, very well, when he said, you know, is that, is that one bed an essential service? Well, when you've got that one sick child, it sure is. And going to, I think, the referrals would be going to Haywood or Emerson or UMass. Concord is a very tough ride for folks. And again, we're talking about people that depend on public transportation in a lot of these instances. So again, Emerson's not that hard for a lot of us to get to. Henry Haywood, not either. But we really are here, I'm here specifically to talk about people who do have troubling, do have trouble and depend on public transportation. And cardiac and pulmonary rehab patients traveling to Marlboro, I was stunned. These are people trying to get better. They're going to rehab in Lemonster, close to where they live, because they are recovering from very serious health issues, both pulmonary and cardiac. You know, getting in a car and driving 40 or 45 minutes in a densely populated, high-traffic area down 495 is a real challenge, I would argue, for a lot of those people. Part, I just have a couple of other comments. Part of the regulation, the CMR 130 dot 122, I just want to read a little bit of it, says, "No fewer than 90 days prior to a hospital closure, essential service discontinuation, the hospital is required to submit notice of its intent to close or discontinue," goes on and on. And it says that in addition to providing the names and addresses of organized healthcare coalitions, and a detailed account of any community engagement and planning which has occurred prior to such filing. That's a real concern that I've had and I've expressed that in the past, that I think, I understand, we get it, Representative Naughton said that, and I agree with him. We understand the changes in healthcare, we understand the challenges that healthcare institutions are facing in terms of providing services and covering costs. However, as a community, I would like, as a community representative, I would like to be involved in that process. I think it's fair that the community who depends on these services and are depending on people like myself and like Mayor Dean Natale and Mr. Kuschmerich and other folks that have spoken, we need to be part of that conversation before, before the decisions are made and the eliminations are rolled out. And one last point that I just wanted to make. I remember when Burbank and Lemonster Hospital merged, this meant, you know, 15 years ago, maybe more than that. But my recollection is that the urgent care, keeping an urgent care emergency room-type facility open on the Burbank campus was a condition of that merger. So I, I raised that as a question because, and that's really a Department of Public Health question, because if you do have a merger like Burbank and Lemonster entered into, and part of that is a condition that maintains services in one of the communities, how long, how good is that condition? When does it expire? When is it no longer valid? I think that's an important question for us to understand.
Next will be Mike Rasso, followed by Wendy Anderson. Do we have Mike Rasso? Mike Rasso here from the Lancaster Board of Selectmen? Okay.
Hi, so Wendy Anderson, I'm a Lemonster School Committee member. I'm a parent, and I am a crisis support worker and family partner with Community Health Links Youth Mobile. So I support families who are going through mental health crises with their children. Many people are familiar with food deserts, and what's happening here is the creation of a healthcare desert. And as is the case with most, as with most scarcities, it's the poorest, which often means children and women who are going to suffer. So what you have here, it's, at its core, is racism and classism, and it's cruelty and dangerous. We should be better than that. At Community Health Link, the families that I support, who are going through mental health crises, we get a lot of families from Fitchburg. Many of them cannot come to our Lemonster office because they do not have transportation. We go to them. How are they going to get to Worcester or to Emerson Hospital if they can't get from Lemonster to Fitchburg, or Fitchburg to Lemonster? Transportation is not just an issue of initially getting your child to the hospital, but recovery while your child is in the hospital is dependent on you being part of that care. If you can't go and visit your child and you need to be separated while they're at their sickest, nobody is going to be recovered. One of the main benefits of having these urgent care facilities popping up everywhere is relieving the burden on emergency rooms as a main source of healthcare for people. Now, closing a campus is urgent care, you're going to place that burden back on emergency rooms. When we visit families in crisis in the Lemonster Emergency Room or in Haywood's Emergency Room, we go to Clinton's Emergency Room, there's often kids sitting in, on gurneys in the hallway in a mental health crisis with no privacy and nowhere for, for proper care. So we already do not have enough mental health care for adolescents, the poor, and now their medical care is in jeopardy. So I just want to say again, we should be better than this in caring for others, especially the most vulnerable among us, the marginalized, children, women, and low-income families.
Our next speaker will be Nathan Boudreau.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nathan Boudreau, and I serve as Senator Dean Tran's Chief of Staff. Unfortunately, Senator Tran is unable to be here with us this evening due to a prior commitment. I am here this evening to convey to you the senator's deep concern regarding the hospital closings going on throughout the Worcester Middlesex District. Senator Tran has spent the last six months in his office working hard with fellow senators and colleagues in the House, with hospital leadership, to find solutions to an ever-growing problem that is a very big public safety concern and not one that Senator Tran takes lightly. Closing of essential medical services is not a public safety issue, but it is also a risk to people's lives. It is not only a public safety issue, but it's also a risk to people's lives. When locations that provide essential services close and consolidate, the difference in minutes in travel could mean the difference between life and death. We have to make sure that essential services are available within travel distances of any community. During the fiscal year 2019 budget process, the senator worked with his colleagues to pass an amendment that would look to address the issues of closing essential services. This amendment was adopted by the Senate. The amendment ensures that an impact review will be done by the Department of Public Health on all public discontinuances in service. This review would also keep the hospitals in question open as long as the review process is ongoing. Senator Tran continues to work hard every day on this issue and is, and realizes it is threatening the lives and well-being of his constituents. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact our office at any time. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Natalie Pereira, followed by Teresa Love.
Nice job on my name. Good job. Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Pereira. I am a registered nurse, and I have been a med-surg nurse at Lemonster Hospital for 32 years. My hospital is a 121-bed facility. The majority of those beds are med-surg beds, and for very good reason. It's the type of unit most in demand in any hospital. It's the type of unit non-critically ill patients go to after surgery, or if we are monitoring a non-critical cardiac issue, or if a patient has pneumonia or any other type of serious infection, broken bone, or a GI disease. The list goes on and on. These beds are in high demand at hospitals all over Massachusetts. In fact, by their own admission, the End Actions UMass Memorial Medical Center in Worcester closed 13 of their 27 inpatient medical mental health beds to convert them to med-surg beds because they said they are desperately needed more, more of them. What's not being talked about when folks talk about the closure of our pediatric beds here in Lemonster, which in and of itself is a complete travesty, and will cause hardship for so many families in our community, is that UMass Memorial Health Alliance is also closing 12 med-surg beds. These pediatric beds are on a swing unit capable of carrying both pediatric and adult patients. UMass Health Alliance is literally throwing the baby out with the bathwater, just closing all of the beds. In fact, they already have. Why? Because they can. They actually closed that unit in April, well in advance of this hearing. But here's what you all need to know. They have opened that unit at least twice since that closing. Yes, and that's during the spring and summer months. The need for hospitalizations and hospital beds skyrocket in the fall and winter months during cold, flu, and pneumonia seasons, and due to injuries from snow and ice. That's the nature of hospital care for adults and children. So here we have UMass closing pediatric and med-surg beds in the summer, and they are pursuing this closure even after having to reopen this unit twice due to, due to an insufficient number of beds available for patients who needed them at our hospital. And only after these patients, that would be your mother, your father, your sister, your brother, your husband, your wife, have spent hours and hours boarding in our emergency department. So rather than keeping the unit open to adults and babies and children who need them, our hospital administration wants their cake and they want to eat it too. Their plan is to close the unit so that there's no cost center to worry about. So they will lay off and displace staff, causing tremendous upheaval among our Lemonster Hospital family. Some staff will leave the hospital entirely, and some others will move on to other positions. But at the end of the day, it's smoke and mirrors. They will need to reopen these beds again and again to continue to rob Peter, and continue to rob Peter to pay Paul. And in doing so, they will deplete other areas of the hospital from the vital staff that we need to provide adequate care. Why and how should this be allowed? This is reality, folks. This is what the hospital industry can get away with, because there are no laws protecting patients and the citizens from whatever the hospital administrators want to do. Why is UMass a so-called nonprofit healthcare system? They have a responsibility to our community, and this is unacceptable. It is unconscionable. People deserve better healthcare. People deserve better healthcare where they live, without having to fall victim to the whims of a healthcare executive who cares far more about their profits than they do about patients. They have a duty, they have a duty, they have a duty to these patients and for the workers who provide that care. Think hard about this. Think about it. We should not allow ourselves to be victims to healthcare executives who care far more about their bottom line than they do about us.
Hi, my name is Teresa Love. I'm a registered nurse at Lemonster Community Hospital, and I work on the three-center pediatric unit. Pediatrics is a subunit on a non-telemetry medical surgical floor. I have worked as a pediatric nurse at the hospital for over 17 years. Prior to merging the PD unit with the neighboring medical surgical unit three-center, Pediatrics used to have a daily census of three to four patients, with spikes up to 10 to 12 during the winter season. We also cared for most GYN post-op recovery patients and other single diagnosis adult medical surgical patients. Along with the inpatient pediatric care, we did the Phase II recovery of the pediatric patients, which meant the PD patients who were having surgery would come onto our floor, get ready for surgery, and then come back and finish their recovery and be discharged from home, from a very calm, child-friendly environment. We also provided sick child care for the employees at the hospital so they could still come into work, know that their child was getting excellent pediatric skilled-level care from coworkers, and can come up and see them on their breaks. Lastly, we did IV infusions for PD and adult patients. With the arrival of the pediatric hospitalist program managed by UMass, our census actually went down instead of up. We were told our acuity would go up, and census would also then increase, since patients that had previously been sent to UMass could now be admitted to us. This did not happen. In fact, we had the In fact, we had the surgical recovery, sick childcare, and infusion services discontinued. We also stopped getting infants who were withdrawing from drugs and infants that had jaundice. We, the nurses, met with managers, chief of pediatrics, pediatric hospitalists, trying to brainstorm to find out ways to keep our unit busy and offer these services. To no avail. We lost highly skilled pediatric nurses. Then-management wanted us to merge with the medical surgical unit called Three Center. This happened over four years ago, and it was to maintain two units' functionality and to prevent the opening-closing, opening-closing cycle that both units were in. This merger was done voluntarily to sustain and improve two units and make into one. No layoffs occurred. Staff left voluntarily for other departments to prevent this. We became a med-surg unit with a PD subunit. The staff worked very hard to make this hybrid unit work and be successful. We were met with many roadblocks, but still we moved forward. The merger was never supported by upper management, even though it was their idea, and the cross-training of med-surg nurses to pediatrics that was agreed to with the M&amp;A never occurred. We lost more highly skilled pediatric nurses. So, now here we are, four years later. We have what appears to be exactly what upper management intended, their own self-fulfilling prophecy, if you will. The pediatric census has plummeted with the hospital diverting pediatric cases to other facilities, not supporting or marketing or recruiting for PD services, and because of this, we have too few patients and staff has left. This was by design. It was clearly their intention to have the pediatric service be closed. This unit has been closed since Patriots Day of 2018 with all pediatric patients being deferred to other facilities. Staff in the ER, families in the ER, were all being told there were no pediatric nurses. Even the pediatric hospitals believed there were no pediatric nurses available, but actually we were working on other units. Prior to this closure, the staff had been actively engaged with the CNO Judy Thorpe, Chief PD Hospitalist, Dr. Matthew Marcello, to come up with ways to keep the unit open, have a stable med-surg adult census so when a PD patient needed to be admitted, we were open and ready. Due to poor management, not following through on the cross-training, and the repeated closing of the unit, deferring of PD patients from the ER to UMass, we did have a deficit of PD skilled nurses because, again, highly skilled pediatric nurses left, along with new hires of med-surg nurses. Lemonster is the second-largest city in central Mass and should offer less, should not offer less to the community it serves, but offer more. Patients stay in the ER. Patients stay in the ER for eight or more hours waiting for a bed while ours stand empty. Pediatric surgeries are still being done with no clear plan as to how they should be cared for if they cannot complete their recovery during PACU's normal hours. Families who may not have resources to travel to Worcester are forced to get care out of their community. They must now pay for parking, have the added stress of extended family not being able to assist them or visit their child. There is no running home to get a child on or off the bus, take a quick shower, feed the dog. All the things... All the things that a family must deal with while their child is sick and recovering. Knowing that a nurse that is taking care of your child, or the fact that she's your neighbor, or she goes to your hairdresser, or your kid played a sport with her kid, offers a level of security that can't be duplicated in a big, strange-city hospital. Even Health Alliance, Lemonster Hospital's own employees who carry the hospital insurance will have to go to Worcester and receive care not from their colleagues who they know and work with, but from strangers, or they will pay out of network if they choose to stay closer to home. You had a rare commodity, PD nurses with strong med-surg skills and a desire to do what it takes to keep a viable unit open. Med-surg nurses willing to cross to pediatrics, you have squandered it. You who have been entrusted to serve the community have done the community a great disservice by reducing the quality of care in their community and the degradation of services, and our youngest and their families will pay that price.
Our next speaker will be Tammy Agüez, followed by Hillary Van Ness.
Hi, my name is Tammy Agüez. I'm the Director of Help for Our Community, and that's why I was asked to speak here tonight. But listening to our mayor and our city councilors and our state reps and our amazing nurses, nothing I can say to you tonight. They're going to help that decision. But I am going to talk about being a grandmother and a mother in this city. This hospital has been an amazing help. My granddaughter has biliary atresia, and at eight weeks, she was diagnosed in Lemonster Hospital. Both her parents are very young. They both work. And one had to stop working to be able to provide for Anora. Anora had a liver transplant last year. Anytime, as you may know, with a transplant, she forever will need services. And this community she depends on to go and if she has a cold, if, you know, all the things that we normally worry about with two-year-olds, to drive out to Worcester to get that taken care of, this is insanity. Our community needs this hospital. You were entrusted to our children, our family members, and our community. It's our hospital. You don't get the right to take it from us.
Hi, my name is Hillary Van Ness. I am a registered nurse at Health Alliance. I've been working there since 1982. It's my hospital. Approximately, and I've got the backstories to a lot of the information that you're being given by the administrators at Health Alliance. Approximately June 1st, we had a surgery booked. It was a pediatric case, and the surgeon found out that we were no longer doing surgery, pediatric surgery at Lemonster Hospital after the mom and the kid had checked in and was in the holding area. He had no idea that we were not going to be doing pediatric surgery at Lemonster Hospital. It happened to a general surgeon, same thing, transferred into Health Alliance, found out, nope, no, we're not doing surgery anymore on pediatric patients at Health Alliance. After this occurred, I spoke with the Chief of Orthopedic Surgery, who was busy writing orders on somebody else. I said, "Did you know they were closing pediatrics?" And he said, "Yes." So, no one knew. The doctors didn't know, the patients didn't know, and it was only after that several surgeries, the doctors were told that they couldn't perform them, that they started talking. One of the general surgeons told me, all of a sudden, when they realized what was going on, they realized that there had been a surprising lack of pediatric appendectomies. So, they were being referred out by the emergency room. On whose order, we don't know. But the fact that people were choosing not to have their surgery at Lemonster Hospital is not really accurate. It's almost what I would call fake news. They're writing that down. So, let's backtrack four years ago, because I've got a lot stored up here. As you heard from one of the nurses, we agreed upon in a contract that the nurses on Three Center and pediatrics would cross-train to each area. That way, that would accommodate the fluctuating census in both departments. So, that was, that cross-training occurred with some people, but never fully the whole staff. Some pediatric nurses were able to work in both units, and it was, it's a great floor to be able to take patients to... So, we're going to backtrack now 10 years, the management that we had then. I work in the perioperative area. I work in the recovery room. What used to happen was when a child came in for, say, a tonsillectomy, they would be admitted to pediatrics, they would come down before surgery at the appropriate time, and we would do the surgery, they would go to recovery, they would do the phase, first phase of recovery, and when we felt that they were, pain was under control, minimal nausea, they would go back upstairs to pediatrics, where they would be recovered in a child-friendly environment away from fresh post-ops that are vomiting, monitors that are going off. You know, it was, it was a suitable environment for a family to take their time while their child recovered. My job in the recovery room is to recover somebody. Once they're done with recovery, it's time for me to let them go and move on to the next phase of their care. When I have to hold a child in surgical daycare or the recovery, in surgical daycare Phase II, it ties me up from taking care of another patient because that's still my patient. So, the turnover becomes bogged down. You know, the unit next to pediatrics, it's a 10-bed unit. I'm going to go off-track here a little bit. It's a 10-bed unit. It abuts pediatrics. They've recently, they've closed the floor, and we've had patients backed up in the emergency room waiting hours for beds, hours. I'm very involved with the orthopedic patients in the surgical department. I help teach joint school. We have come up with a plan for our joint replacement patients that is, it's been booked months in advance, their surgery, they've made arrangements, and when we have to hold people in the recovery room for five, six, seven hours, it delays a carefully planned post-op course of recovery. They're not getting out of their bed. They're not using the toilet, they're not walking to the bathroom because they're in the recovery room, and they've got other patients right next to them, and they're waiting five, six, seven hours, all day. Now, closing pediatrics is, if the hospital needs to do this, that's on them, but there are solutions to this problem. There are very viable solutions to being able to keep the pediatric unit open, which I'm not sure that they're availing themselves of. But let's take another step. No one has come to us in the recovery room with a plan for our pediatric patients that are having surgery if something goes wrong and they have to be admitted. What do we do? Do we use the call team to stay with them all night? What do we do? There's been no plan put in place. Do we send them out via ambulance down to Worcester? Never been any discussion about a backup Plan B, about what's to happen. And, you know, Health Alliance Hospital, Lemonster Hospital, used to advertise exceptional care for everyone, every day. Not so much.
Our next speaker will be Amy St. John, followed by Jackie LeBlanc.
Hello, my name's Amy St. Jean. I'm going to read my, this is my letter that I actually sent to the DPH, and I'm just going to read it out loud. I was born at Lemonster Hospital. I've lived in this community my entire life. I have deep family roots in both Lemonster and Fitchburg. I became a nurse in 1994 and have spent my career thus far, 24 years, as an RN at Health Alliance. I have been a part of numerous changes in the hospital from the merge of Burbank and Lemonster Hospitals to our affiliation with UMass Memorial Healthcare, to the recent merge with Clinton Hospital. I am invested in my community. I care about and for my community. My patients and the care they receive will always be my priority. I worked pediatrics, actually, for six years and migrated through multiple departments. Part of my reasoning for migrating out of pediatrics was the constant open enclosure and manipulating of census and got tired of floating to other areas. I migrated ultimately to the PACU, the recovery room, where I get the pleasure of taking care of both adult and pediatric patients across the entire spectrum, and I love it. I have a particular passion for the littles, as I like to call them. We all understand that in the face of, as the face of healthcare is changing, the need to streamline services in a community to maximize care while being fiscally responsible is of the utmost importance for the survival of hospitals now more than ever. Healthcare, however, is more than just a business. The bottom line cannot always be the bottom line in healthcare. In a perfect world, we would not need to consolidate anything. We live far from a perfect world or economy, however. The proposed consolidations of services is difficult for us all. My community, hospital, nurse self would love to see all of our services stay intact. My fiscally-minded self knows that sometimes change is necessary for the greater good. I don't know if Paul McKinnon remembers this, but when he started at our hospital and was coming around to meet nurses, he asked me where I worked, how long I'd been here, and why I stayed there. And I told him that I enjoy caring for people in my community. It's home, and I think most patients really like to know that they're being cared for by someone who took care of their brother, or who lived down the street from their uncle, or there's some sort of community connection that's a difference that you do not get when you are being shipped to a larger facility where no one knows you. The one aspect of this consolidation plan that I struggle with the most is the proposed closure of the pediatric inpatient care area in Lemonster. The cardiac rehab, certainly going to Marlboro is not a viable option as far as I'm concerned. But the pediatric closure really is hitting very close to home. I've raised my children here. I'm hoping, I have a daughter who'd recently got married, I'm hoping to have grandchildren in this area, and I don't want them schlepping all over the state for adequate care when a child goes through a normal childhood illness that does not need a tertiary or trauma care level of care. They should be able to get that in their community. The pediatric care for these common childhood illnesses that prove to be more than what a parent can safely care for at home will be left with no reasonable local solution. The emergency department is for emergencies. It is no place for children and families to be boarding for 24-hour observation care rather than being admitted to a safe, pediatric-friendly, and appropriate level of care, nor is the concept of sending children that could be cared for here by the very experienced, qualified pediatric nurses we have to Worcester to occupy beds in a pediatric ward that might be needed by that community and for illnesses that are more severe. A community of this size, Lemonster, Fitchburg, Townsend, Ashby, Lunenburg, Pepperell, Air, Shirley, and more, with such varied levels of socioeconomic need, deserves a place that their children can be cared for when necessary within their community. Having to travel to Haywood, or Emerson, or UMass in Worcester for these services will be detrimental to many families in this community. Many have difficulty with a 15-minute commute from Lemonster to Fitchburg as the only transportation they have available to them is our very limited public transportation system. We give out taxi vouchers to many in the community. We gave them out when I was working as a nurse in pediatrics. So, a mother... We gave them out when I was working as a nurse in pediatrics, so a mother could get her kids off to school and then come back and stay with her sick child for the day, where, where her other only option would be to just not come in and visit her sick child in the hospital, because she had numerous other commitments at home. Sorry, lost my place. Due to the fluctuating nature of pediatric census, for many years PD would be open and closed as the census would dictate, with those nurses being floated to work in other areas of the hospital. As far as the numbers go, I know that the need for pediatric inpatient services has been downplayed and manipulated, with children being sent out of facility rather than opening a closed pediatric unit and pulling those nurses back to their own unit. With regard to hospital flow, admissions, discharges, wait times in the ED and the PACU on any given day of the week are enormous. We have patients in the emergency room waiting for available, appropriate rooms in the hospital, sometimes for over 24 hours. On several days a week, we have patients in the PACU waiting three, four, sometimes up to five, six, seven, eight hours for a room after surgery. Just last week, the hospital was so full that the third floor, the proposed area for closure, was reopened twice, because there was nowhere else to put patients needing to be admitted. Mind you, this is summer, a predictably lower time period for the hospital. What will we do when flu, pneumonia, and RSV season are upon us? These, there are beds available for patients that need them. The, the third floor adult pediatric combination floor is a non-cardiac monitored floor. There are patients who are being placed in other areas of the hospital where there are cardiac monitoring capabilities, because their rooms are prettier, instead of patients being appropriately placed where their services are that they need. I am asking the hospital to reconsider and work with your employees and your community that are at the heart of these facilities and a part of these communities to problem-solve and figure out a way to save this pediatric service. I also ask that the DPH find these services to be essential to our community, because we believe that they are. There is a way to maintain this valuable resource for our community, there has to be, our community needs us.
My name is Jackie LeBlanc, and I have been a hospice nurse at Health Alliance Home Health and Hospice for 15 years. I do not belong to, I don't work at the hospital, but I do work with colleagues at the hospital. We have cardiac rehab patients coming onto hospice that have had cardiac rehab, that's kept them well long enough that they didn't need our services on hospice. Pediatrics is very important as a mother, I've had my children at the emergency room there, I've been a lifelong resident of Lunenburg for the last 54 years, this is our community, and, and it's important to me. I did not prepare a nice fancy speech, because I was not going to speak this evening, but it's important for you to know, especially the DPH, that these services are vital to our, to our community, and very important to the people that live here. So oftentimes, I go to meetings at work and we hear how Health Alliance, Home Health and, excuse me, UMass, Health Alliance, Clinton, I don't, I can't even say the right name anymore, I'm sorry, how, how they put, how they put patients, that their priorities, that patients are first, their actions say something different. And I urge the department to please keep these services open. I just urge that you keep these services open. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Miko Nakagawa, followed by Robin Van Cot.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Miko Nakagawa. I'm a certified emergency nurse and a certified pediatric emergency nurse at Leominster Hospital, where I have been proudly serving this community for 20, 20 years, 16 of which have been in your emergency department, your emergency department. There have been a lot of changes in those years that have greatly impacted emergency department and how it functions and cares for its patients. One of the biggest changes has been the decrease in behavioral health beds across the state, including the closure of Burbank Mental Health Unit. We have seen the definite increase in behavioral health patients, often 10 to 15 patients at a time. Our unlocked behavioral health area fits 11 patients if there are two patients in a room and three in the hallway. Overflow goes into the regular medical treatment area. Also, the number of assaults has definitely increased, often several times a week. Parents do choose to have their patients stay in Leominster. They say it all the time, that they don't want their patient, their children transferred to other facilities. We have transferred numerous children appropriate for Leominster's pediatric area, because of quote-unquote "lack of staff." But when I talk to my colleagues, who are somewhere else in the hospital, or are sitting at home waiting to come to work, they've not been called. The hospital promised to cross-train the nurses from three center to pediatrics, and it never happened. That was a viable option, that was a way to staff the unit to prevent those children from being transferred to Worcester. Children that are sick, especially with respiratory problems, need a calm and quiet place to rest that is comfortable. Any increase in their anxiety can escalate a sick child to a critically sick child. The emergency department is not conducive to good pediatric inpatient care, not for observation, not for any extended length of time. There are no pediatric designated plans in the new emergency department. We're being told that we will model after Milford Regional Medical Center what they have done. They closed their pediatric unit, their inpatient unit, and they board children in their emergency department. We are not modeled after them. I called them this morning. They have a separate pediatric area in their emergency department, and their behavioral health area is locked. And they're not even close to each other. The closure of the Burbank Urgent Care is also a disastrous plan for the emergency A lot of patients treated at Burbank Urgent Care don't have the means of payment upfront or the correct insurance to go to other urgent cares. They will end up in the emergency department. In an era where ED overcrowding and assaults against healthcare workers is making national headlines on a regular basis, how is it a good idea to care for pediatric inpatients or a local urgent care center, I mean, care for these children in the emergency department, or a local urgent care center will be responsible for these children traumatized in the emergency department when they see somebody tackled in the hallway? And how are patients and their families supposed to travel from Marlboro? Thank you.
I'm a little bit on the other half of the spectrum. I've been a patient, as you can see. Natalie, thank you, and all the nurses, thank you. I became a patient of Leominster Hospital two years ago, December 30th. I was dressed in with a collapsed lung. I was brought in through the emergency room, and I went upstairs, and for 64 days I remained in Leominster Hospital. I hit all floors of the hospital, and they took out my lung. The only place I didn't go was maternity. And I want to tell you, those nurses saved my life, literally. I then went on, I then went on to rehabilitation, to cardiac and pulmonary rehab. And I was to remain there for six months, and I was to be cared for, but I want to tell you, a lot of the talk has been about money tonight, and a lot of talk has been about the numbers. You know what? I want to share something here, okay? You don't know what it's like when you got a tube, and you're gonna have to figure out how you're gonna get in a shower and take a shower without running out of breath, but you know what? I learned how I could take a shower with oxygen at rehab. And you want to know why? Because the doctors and the administration part of it don't have the time. They don't have an idea, okay? I want to share some of the things that have come out of rehab, that I've gotten on the pulmonary end and the cardiac end. And numbers, yeah, you know, but you know what? There's six of us. There's one here that would love to be here tonight, and I want to tell you, he's a 66-year-old man, and I've been rehab with him, in the maintenance program for the last four months. Two weeks ago, he was called to Brigham and Women's Hospital, and he underwent a successful lung transplant, double lung transplant. And you know, he went home today, and he wanted me to say that rehab needs to stay. Rehab needs to stay. I guess you talk about, you know, you don't realize that these benefits of the hospitals and services that they, they provide. The physical care, the emotional care, you know, when you get frustrated and you can't breathe, or you get scared, let me tell you, when I'm in the middle of an aspiration and I'm having an anxiety attack along with that, because I can't breathe, I'm not jumping in my car and going to Marlboro. I think the mayor said it, you know, we gotta take a look at what we're doing, you know? The education, you know, that I've received, that the nurses at the pulmonary rehab take with me, and the referrals and the, the outside resources that they've been able to get me in touch with, and I'm just one, I'm only speaking on my iPhone behalf, but I can tell you, I've, I've watched it happen with many, you know, and, and that's the framework of healthcare. One of the things I heard tonight from one of the directors was that, you know, it's become a monetary thing, you know, and that's what I'm hearing about us closing some of the services. Well, I guess I want the DPH to think about this, but it's also very much the administrators. If you go through the garage where the pulmonary and cardiac rehab is, okay, you'll look, and there's right now five generators that are wrapped in plastic. There's multiple, multiple air conditioners that I've watched deliver, you know, we're talking millions of dollars. You want to talk money? We're talking money into a lot of people getting a lot of deaths and a lot of, lot of air conditioning, and a lot of good air. I don't know where it's going. So I guess, you know, basically, I want to end with this, and that is that, you know, I, I, I think that we're saying, you know, that, that we're trying to get people into medicinal, you know, rehabilitative care, and that, that rehabilitative care, you know, make yourself better, you know? And I look back, and, and I also come from a drug addiction in my past, and you know what? When I was around, they had detoxification units, and they had drug rehabs, but what did we do? We closed them, you know? We have cardiac rehab and pulmonary rehab, but what are we doing? We're closing them. And what are we doing? Here, take a pill and go home. Call the doctor in the morning if you don't feel good, you know? He'll only charge $345 to see you for 10 minutes and tell you to take some prednisone. You'll feel better. It's the people that count, you know? And we need to think about healthcare and not business care, because lives matter, money will always be there. I want to thank the nurses, I want to thank the reps today, and I want to thank you.
Next will be Mary Ann Brasad, followed by Mickey Jermaine.
Hi. My name is Mary Ann Brasad, and I'm a patient at cardiac rehab. And thank you all for coming and listening, and I hope you are listening, I hope this is not just a formality, because it's, it's majorly important. It's not just a run-through. We live in a generation or community with, that's aging, and more people are having heart attacks. We all are cardiac events, I guess you call them now, to be politically correct. And the other thing is, there's also a lot of younger people are having cardiac events. We have a problem with obesity in this country, and as you can see, it hasn't missed Leominster, Fitchburg, or Clinton. So those are all potential heart attacks waiting to happen. My original heart attack was in 2006, and I was in a cardiac rehab on the parking level behind where you register, and I have to tell you, it was little, it was, you, you really got to know the person next to you, but we managed. It wasn't beautiful like what we have right now, which is a very nice area. And we stood, we had great people up there then, and we have wonderful people with us now, both the nurse and our cardiac therapists, that are, you know, the physical therapists that are there. They're wonderful. I've been involved since, again, since 2017, and it saved my life. I wouldn't be here tonight, which probably you're wishing I wasn't. But since 2017, I have been involved with cardiac rehab, and it's, I just can't imagine it going away. I could go to a gym, a lot cheaper, but I would walk into a gym and get on a machine, and unfortunately, my blood pressure tends to run low. So my blood pressure, some days it's not quite up to 90, we're talking 80, over 50, so they don't let me exercise. Now, if I go to Planet Fitness and I hop on a treadmill, well, we all know I'm gonna end up at the emergency room. So I really feel that there needs to be someone tracking our medical stats when we go in, so to speak. We keep track of it in our days, but they do do the blood pressures. I really think it's a valuable thing to have cardiac rehab, and I think it's going to become more valuable as time goes on. And I respect everybody's request to keep pediatrics open, keep Burbank open, but my fear is, if we save all those children and we save everybody in Burbank, they're not gonna have any place to go when they have a heart attack. going to have any place to go when they have a heart attack. So let's try to keep them, keep it open. The other thing is, I was under the impression that UMass Hospital Health Alliance Clinton was, it's too long, was a nonprofit. Apparently not, because we're talking about the bottom dollar. The other piece is, I also think that you can make numbers, say anything you want. You can, you can send kids out and that's all I have to say, but thank you and thank you to Cardiac Rehab and the camaraderie of the people that are in Cardiac Rehab.
My name is Mickey Guzman and I am here both as a resident of the Twin Cities, Leominster and Pittsburgh, and also as an advocate and liaison working at the Spanish-American Center in Leominster. Two of my children were born in Leominster and two were born in Pittsburgh and I've been in the Twin Cities for over 36 years. First of all, at the Spanish-American Center, so you have an idea, is a multi-service agency and we work, provide services for the neediest individuals. The people that are mostly economically disadvantaged, people that don't even make $5,000, $6,000 a year. People that are so poor that they come to our soup kitchen for breakfast and lunch four times a week. With the help of Ginny's Helping Hand, we're able to provide the meals for these individuals. Some of our programs do include services for children, includes services for elders, includes bilingual services. The soup kitchen, as I mentioned earlier, we provide a lifeline to the communities at large. And it is appalling what Health Alliance is trying to do with our health services. At the Spanish-American Center, we're extremely concerned of the closure of pediatric services, just as we are concerned of all of the other proposals because, again, we serve the communities at large. We are a bilingual community. So I, I do have one question that I want to propose and I want to preface that by saying, please do not misconstrue this question as an immigration question, as we know that immigration is a very, very hot topic. But we are a bilingual agency, Spanish-American Center, and we know that health services, when individuals go for health services, they're supposed to be treated or receive the services with someone that speaks their language. So my question to UMass Memorial and to DPH, are there's going to be a forum for individuals that speak Spanish at the second most important language in the world? And I'm not, thank you. And I'm not talking about immigration, Puerto Ricans or American citizens. Second, third-generation Hispanics that come here and are also a part of Health Alliance Services, is there going to be a forum so that their voices are heard, so that you really understand how absurd this is, what you're trying to do? Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ruby Midden, followed by Bruce, and I apologize, I can't make out your last name. Oh, you're going to pass, Bruce?
Hi, my name is Bruce Amundon. I've been in cardiac rehab since October of '02, when I came from a four-way bypass. I met a lot of good people there and I've been treated very well. I think losing cardiac and going to a gym or somewhere the place without supervision is a real bad move. And I like to stand up for everybody in cardiac rehab and the pulmonary and I hope some way we can keep it. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Charles Cavanaro, followed by Judith Thorpe.
Thank you, members of the department, colleagues, interested members of the public. My name is Charles Cavanaro and I am the Chief Medical Officer of UMass Memorial Community Hospitals. And I come to, before you today, to discuss the hospital's pediatric inpatient unit as well as the Burbank Urgent Care Center. Pediatric inpatient unit first. Quantity can affect quality of care regarding pediatric inpatient units. When you have an average daily census of about one, and let's be clear, the average daily census of about one isn't a six-month issue, it's a multi-year issue. That simply is not enough to sustain the skills of the staff. We have a 24/7, 365, extremely well-trained academic hospitalist, pediatric hospitalist service, that service is going to continue. But it's hard to recruit to those units with low average daily censuses and it's hard to provide a state-of-the-art service with that kind of an average daily census. It's just not sustainable. And that's in terms of equipment, plant, staff, et cetera. It's not in terms of our pediatric hospitalists, which will stay exactly where they are in Leominster. There are additional pediatric inpatient units at both a community level of care, that's at Hayward and Emerson, and also at an academic level of care, which is at UMass in Worcester. And we also have globally recognized pediatric center in Boston, Children's Hospital. The driving distance is to UMass, 28 minutes. That's for tertiary pediatric care. Hayward Hospital is 18 minutes away. Emerson Hospital, a little bit further, at 34 minutes away. Unfortunately, closing inpatient pediatric care units at local community or small community hospitals is not a new story. This has been happening over the last two decades, actually. And it doesn't seem to have worsened the pediatric care landscape. The fact is that pediatric care is steadily moved more towards an outpatient delivery. And by outpatient, I would include urgent cares and I would also include emergency rooms. It's important to understand, when you have an average daily census of one patient, a little more than one, on the pediatric unit that we have, we see 7,000 pediatric patients in our emergency room. 7,000 a year. A lot of the pediatric care that's being given out is completed in an emergency room or an urgent care center or an outpatient center. Our pediatric groups in the area have extended hours to see pediatric patients. So the fact is that care is moving more to the outpatient delivery system and because of that, inpatient care units actually become more complex and more resource-intensive. So the ones that, so we have fewer in local communities and the ones that we do have actually are more complex, higher levels of care, and actually they deserve censuses that are higher so that they can maintain, you know, their skills. Studies suggest that the presence of a pediatric ICU is key to a pediatric inpatient unit. If you do not have a pediatric ICU, and in fact, of the areas I mentioned, the only place that has a pediatric ICU in '02 include Children's Hospital, UMass has one at the medical center as well. So community-based versus academic pediatric care seems to have a higher risk of closure, precisely for the reasons I mentioned, more complex care is being delivered as inpatient care. We also need to understand that we have 24/7, 365 academic-based pediatric hospital service, which adds to our ability to determine quickly in an emergency room when the patient's in the ED, whether that patient needs to go to a larger academic center or whether they can be taken care of locally or even locally at another hospital if a transfer's needed. And I think this is, will be helpful to the families of pediatric patients. Let's move on to the Burbank Urgent Care Center. There's been some things said tonight that I just want to make sure are clear. There is a UMass Memorial CareWell Urgent Care Center, which is 2.9 miles away from our own Health Alliance Clinton Urgent Care Center, I'm sorry, Burbank Urgent Care Center. And we also have one at, in Leominster, Urgent Care Center in Leominster, which is about 4.9 miles away from the Burbank Urgent Care Center. They both provide excellent urgent care with competent physicians who can see pediatric patients and patients, you know, throughout the age spectrum. While the CareWell facility, which is presently in Pittsburgh, requires a referral, requires either a referral or a credit card, so you have to be referred by your doctor. That includes Medicaid patients. Now, the one that Health Alliance Clinton owns, which is in Leominster, does not require either of those, either a referral or a credit card. So I think if you look nationally at what the average distance for patients is for an urgent care center, I don't think that you would find the particular hardship that's mentioned, at least on a population basis. So we have an active relationship with CareWell and the UMass Memorial Health System is partnered with them. They're open and encouraging of our Health Alliance Clinton feedback for continuous quality improvement for those patients using that and also are establishing ties with the physician community. So that's what I would like to say tonight and I'll give you this.
My name is Judith Thorpe and I'm the Chief Nursing Officer. Thank you for, to members of the department and community for coming here tonight and giving us the opportunity to talk about the situation at hand. I come here today particularly to talk about our hospital's very important responsibility when making the decision to care for hospitalized inpatient pediatric patients, which is the 24/7 availability of pediatric competent clinical staff. We've mentioned several times the average daily census on the inpatient unit. This has impacted our ability to recruit RN staff to Health Alliance Clinton. RN staff with a passion for caring for pediatric patients and an interest in caring for this patient population infrequently apply to physicians when the average daily census is one patient, when there's opportunity to work in children's specialty units and specialty hospitals. Nursing staff with limited or no pediatric experience are challenged to develop the necessary competencies required to care for the hospitalized pediatric patients in a typical length of orientation or even an extended length of orientation. In addition, a low average daily census influences the ability of current RN staff to maintain critical competencies required to care for hospitalized pediatric patients. Urgent and emergent pediatric care is available at Health Alliance Clinton facilities with an option of Leominster Urgent Care and our two emergency departments, which combined see way higher than 7,000 pediatric visits every year. Well-defined referral patterns facilitate transfer to other inpatient facilities should the patient require extended care. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Our next speaker is, will be Andrea Cupfer, followed by Cheryl Bouchard. Do you have Andrea here? Cheryl Bouchard?
As I just announced, my name is Cheryl Bouchard. And I have been a registered nurse for, I'm going to call it, Leominster Hospital, for nearly 50 years. And I now work at Burbank Urgent Care for the past 10 years. I can only tell you that when we talk about the census, and we did receive some information about the census, our census went down considerably after the Leominster Urgent Care opened. To this day, we still get calls from people saying, "You're open? We thought you closed." Now, these things were brought up to our management, saying, "Why don't you advertise what we do?" Because we do things differently at Burbank Urgent Care than what we do, than they do at Leominster Urgent Care. We, until recently, have had a doctor every day. There was a registered nurse there every day, along with a medical assistant. Now, having a registered nurse at an urgent care helps because now we're able to put intravenous fluids into patients who come to us, IV antibiotics. We are able to stabilize patients who continue to come to Burbank Urgent Care because that's the hospital they've always gone to, regardless of the fact that it's not an emergency room. Some people still think it is. So we do things differently and the differences between the two places, and nothing against Leominster Urgent Care, I know the people there, I've worked with them all. They do a great job. They're in a prime position, let's face it, next to Marshalls. So, you know, they had a lot of opportunity. The other thing that went on is when they opened, there were full-page ads in the paper constantly. And a little bit down the bottom in the little corner, maybe you might have seen Burbank. People didn't know that we were open. The other issue that goes on is that we serve a lot of people that don't have insurance, certainly don't have credit cards, and are not willing to walk the however many miles everybody tells us everything is from, to get there. Okay, 2.9, excuse me. I never, I never walked it myself. But in any case, I mean, we see patients trudging up the hill in the middle of winter because they need us. We're there, we're there for them and we want to be there for them. We serve a purpose. Obtaining a new PCP is an unbelievable job in itself. You can't get in to see your physician. I've known my physician since he was a resident. Takes a while for me to get in to see him. So when you are not even established with a physician, it's nearly impossible. So to go to the CareWell Urgent Care, if you neither have insurance or a credit card or a referral, let's face it, you're screwed, okay? So there's a purpose to Burbank Urgent Care and I feel that we haven't been, first, certainly, advertised enough to tell people what we do. And we have a lot of the same people all the time. They know us, we know them. They like us, they thank us. They make a point of saying, "Thank you," when they leave. We help refill their medications because they haven't been able to get into their PCP or they don't have one and they won't refill any medications unless they have a physician. So again, where are they? They're lost. They're lost. We see many, many people all the time with the same issues as every place else. But we do get some very ill patients, and we do our best, again, we have a physician there most of the time. Now, because of problems with getting physicians, we have physician assistants and nurse practitioners who do a fine job. But, I had a patient the other day call up and wanted to know, "Do you have a doctor there that can take care of me?" Yes, we do. And we see people, and we help them. And they're happy to, we're there, even though we're kind of up on that hill that, I don't even like to drive up or down, but in any case, it is tough. We, this is a little anecdote, the staff at Burbank Urgent Care, we found out about the proposed closing through a text message one evening. That's how we were told. We had no idea, you know, we knew the census was low, but, all right, you know. But it's, it's a place that you'd have to be, you have to come and you have to sit and see the people that we see. They, they're the underprivileged, they're the people that don't have any place else to go. And they look to us for their care. And we're there, and we're willing to give them their care. And I think if we probably promoted more things about Burbank Urgent Care, the census would probably go up. I looked on the website of UMass Memorial Healthcare Clinton Hospital, and it said that they were committed to improving the health of the people in our diverse communities. They may have to change that. Under Values, it says consistently excelling at patient-centered care. There you go. Affecting change through teamwork and system thinking. I'm a member of a team. I haven't been approached, and neither have any of the other team members, to see how we could change that, at all. And the best one I found was supporting our diverse communities. There'll be another change, I'm sure. So, shame on you, UMass, is all I can say. You really need to think about what you're doing. People need our care. I didn't go into this business of healthcare 50 years ago for my pocketbook, okay? Because if I did, I made a big mistake. And I like taking care of patients, I like seeing them, I like teaching them, I like having a relationship with them, as do all the rest of the staff, in the hospital, where I worked for many years, and in the urgent care. And I think this decision is not a very good one for our community, or the surrounding communities, because it's not just Pittsburgh and Leominster, it's all the other communities that come to us, and they want us to be there. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Bill McShaney, followed by Paul McKinnon.
Good evening. You've heard from an awful lot of people who know a lot more about this business than I do. I will tell you one thing, you've heard from a lot of nurses tonight, and if you read Forbes recently, what is the most trusted profession in our country? Nurses. So, if we can't, if we can't trust what they have to say, I guess the rest of the country's wrong. I'd like to thank the Department of Public Health for coming tonight and providing the residents in the area time to express their genuine concerns regarding the future closings of proposed UMass Health Alliance. I'm not a nurse, I'm not a doctor, I'm a former teacher and principal. I was a principal for 20 years. And I'm going to talk about the perspective I saw with families and children in the schools I worked in. As a teacher and a principal, I frequently witnessed the crucial need for local urgent care and pediatric care facilities, and services that are currently successfully and efficiently offered at both the Burbank campus and the Leominster campus. These services that currently exist effectively and compassionately address the needs of children that I heard on school playgrounds, who become sick at school from chronic illnesses such as asthma, seizure disorders, and other chronic illnesses, and who are injured in playing after-school sports. When the school contacts a parent about these types of incidents, heightened anxiety, justified fear, and in some cases crucial timing become very important factors for both the child and for the parent. Unfortunately, I have had firsthand experiences with the effect that even minutes can have in some of these frightening situations. These services are especially, but not exclusively, needed for the families who have, of lower-income families in our community. I'm sure you're aware that transportation for many of our families can be problematic. Getting to your child quickly and safely is an absolute necessity for any parent, and for their child. Will this be possible if every service needed is located outside this area? The answer is clearly no. The impact on families who lack the resources or proper transportation to travel to their sick children or injured children quickly, and in some cases consistently, over a long period of time, will be a tremendous practical and emotional burden. It's just plain, simply not fair. The elimination of these services will negatively impact on our children receiving timely access to the much need of medical care that we currently receive and that we do appreciate. Timely care does save lives, and all of our children deserve that time. In closing, I ask that you consider making your decisions based on a community that is being expertly served, and not just on a profitable business plan. Thank you.
Members, thank you for the members of the Department of Public Health, distinguished visitors, and I'd certainly thank all the people in this room today. My name is Paul McKinnon. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Health Alliance Clinton Hospital. I am a registered nurse, and I, and I'm a nurse practitioner, and I actually care for patients in the community. I actually came to this community about five years ago and decided to work here so I could actually help this community. Healthcare is a constantly changing environment. These changes are influenced by state, by many factors that we don't have control over, accelerated by advances in technology, and just the state legislature, and just many of the funding things that we have trouble navigating. Some of the things that have been presented here today is a, is a response to some of those challenges. This does not devalue the programs that we're talking about today. We like those programs, we'd like to continue them, but it just doesn't make sense at this time. What we'd like to do is to really look at reshaping the face of healthcare in this area. What that means is to take the resources that we have, invest them better, and look at how we can reinvest into the community. I'm aware these decisions have been very unpopular. I respect that, I respect all of your opinions, I understand that, and we hear you loud and clear. However, we can't continue to operate the same way we always operated. What we can do is change how healthcare is delivered in the community. Many people have spoken about reinvesting in the community. Well, we do invest in the community. We give multiple grants for, for programs, program startups, we're invested in some of municipal, municipal programs out there, and actually, we're adding services to the community. So, we're, what we're trying to do is to really support the things that you've very loudly heard today. I guess, as a nurse, I hold my nursing values very, very deep to me. When we make decisions, we don't make decisions to hurt people, we make decisions that we can help a greater number of people. Some of these changes that we have suggested and we propose will do that, to care for more people in the community and in the public.
Our next speakers will be Jim Richard, followed by Christine Dela Monica.
Good evening. My name is Jim Richard. I've lived in Pittsburgh for 70 years plus. I had a photo lab at Park Hill Plaza in Pittsburgh for 24 years. I've seen the Burbank Hospital move to Leominster, leaving Pittsburgh. I've seen paper mills, I've seen leaving. We all know Unitil had meetings like this, and everybody spoke their mind out of their They didn't listen to anything we really said. Our utility bills are still outrageous. I'm proud to live in the city of Pittsburgh. I love the city of Pittsburgh. I commend all the nurses and doctors for all their dedication that they do for their job. If you really asked them, "Would I do this field if I redid it 50 years ago?", sometimes they'd say, "No, I wouldn't," but they really love it, because you do not work in a hospital without caring. Business decisions are always tough. You have to make the hard decision. Sometimes businesses steer you in advertising to, when you advertise, you usually want business. What someone said previously, their lack of advertising, they were steering us to a fact being that the business venture that they were planning, it's all structured. We really, really have no say, because businesses are only in for making money. Sometimes, sometimes, you have to realize that money is the evil of everything, but the bottom line is we have to have morality also. I know from a business decision, if I owned Burbank Hospital, I would probably have to make that hard, tough decision. From a moral standard, I would never do it. But the bottom line to everything is, the times are changing. But guess what? We still, we still get sick, we have heart attacks, and it might be 4.3 miles to Leominster, but the problem is our streets are not like they used to. Takes a lot more time to get there. The bottom line is, maybe you may not make it there. Maybe half the time when you went to Burbank Hospital, you might still be living. I had the sad opportunity when I, in 1948, I had a ruptured spleen. The Burbank Hospital in Pittsburgh didn't have a surgeon that knew how to fix a ruptured spleen. They only had him in Boston and New York. A doctor was, came from, he happened to be on a business trip, he came and he fixed my ruptured spleen. On the way home, he died in a train accident. But the bottom line to everything is, I don't want to live the next few years or many years left in my life worrying about to get to Leominster, to get to Worcester, vice versa, or vice versa. I know business-wise, yes. But personally, sometimes businesses have to not only think with their head, but with their heart. Thank you.
My name is Christine Dela Monica. I am a mother of two children. My son is 10, and my daughter is six. I live in South Leominster. When my daughter was born in 2012, about five weeks after she was born, she got what I thought was a really bad cold. Okay, well, she was five weeks old, she wasn't eating, she was coughing all night, she, I could tell something was really, really wrong. My son had just gotten over pneumonia, but he was older. So, I took her to the, I took her to the Leominster ER. They tested her, and she had a virus which is called RSV. If you're not familiar with it, excuse me, it's basically a bad cold, but with a five-week-old, it can be fatal. So they admitted her to the pediatric department for five days. It was probably one of the worst weeks of my life, and even now, six years later, I'm still traumatized by it, but, but, the nurses there, probably some who were in this room who took care of my daughter, made it easy for her. I remember, I came one day and I was crying because I was five weeks postpartum and still hormonal, excuse me, and my five-week-old daughter was in the hospital, and one of the nurses put an arm around me and said, "I can imagine how hard it must be to have your daughter in the hospital." That's the kind of care you get in the pediatric department. Again, my children are 10 and six now, and they're older, and hopefully they don't have to be hospitalized anytime soon. But if they do, I'd like to know that I don't have to go all the way down to UMass or Concord, that I can use the community hospital. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Chief Martino of Pittsburgh, followed by Elma Eubanks.
Thank you, and good evening. As stated, my name is Ernie Martino, and I'm the Chief of Police here in the city of Pittsburgh. I came here this evening to observe and support Mayor Dean Natale and the City Councilors of Pittsburgh in their resolution of their disdain about the closure of urgent care at the Burbank Campus. Sitting in the audience tonight, there's a couple nurses that came up here this evening that truly inspired me and made me come up and want to express my opinions of what's happening. I'm going to speak specifically about the urgent care in Pittsburgh. I think it's going to have a significant impact on a very proud community. There was a nurse that came up here that described people walking up the hill. I've been a police officer in the city of Pittsburgh for 31 years. I've seen the best of healthcare, and I've seen the worst of healthcare in the city of Pittsburgh. We had some of the finest doctors and nurses that staffed that emergency room 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At one point during my career, those nurses and doctors saved my life when I was involved in a terrific, terrific accident in the 90s. And if it wasn't for those nurses and those doctors, I probably wouldn't be here this evening speaking to you. 31 years in the police department, I saw a lot of things happen to the Burbank Campus, things that just weren't right. And now we're talking about closing the last entity up there that serves a population in that general area that is a proud people. I grew up in the city of Pittsburgh. I grew up on Elm Street. Elm Street was my neighborhood. The only hospital I knew growing up was Burbank Hospital. There was a nurse that spoke about people walking up the hill. Now, guess what? I walked up that hill with my mother when I was sick, when I was a young child, because that was the only way we could go. Now, to ask people to jump in a cab or get a ride to some other urgent care in the area may sound right talking about it, but the neighborhood we're speaking about is one of the densest, densest neighborhoods in the city of Pittsburgh. It's a challenging neighborhood, but more importantly, it's a neighborhood of people with pride. It's a neighborhood that has changed over the years. When I grew up in that neighborhood, it was Spanish descent, and we were proud of our neighborhood. Today, it's a much diverse neighborhood between Latinos and all sorts of races that are proud to call Pittsburgh home. I'm afraid of what's going to happen with the closure of urgent care. I know the numbers are down up there, I know that the, the numbers aren't walking through the door to sustain keeping it open. However, if there's 30 patients that go there in a day's period, I can tell you, those 30 patients, instead of getting a cab or going to another urgent care, are going to pick up the phone, they're going to call 911, and an ambulance is going to have to be dispatched to the house. And with that, is going to commit resource, additional resources, not only to our fire department, our ambulance services, to our police officers, but it's going to add that many more patients to an already overcrowded emergency room. I urge PPA's to take a hard look at the Pittsburgh situation. I think it's going to have a significant impact on the city of Pittsburgh, and I urge you to- and I urge you to rethink the consideration of closing it down. Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Les hablo en español porque muchas de las personas que vienen aquí no tienen ese acceso. Así que les voy a decir en español lo que hace falta de los servicios que tenemos aquí en Pittsburgh y en Lemonster. Nos hace falta y queremos que sigan aquí y que mantengan esos servicios aquí. So for those of you who didn't understand anything, I made it short in Spanish just so you can understand the difficulty that it is sometimes for people that speak other languages to come to the hospital and to not have those services that are available. As a resident of Pittsburgh, my name is Elmer Eubanks, by the way. I, I see the need that we have, and I understand as a business person, the need that, you know, the hospital tries to figure out, you know, what's the best resources that we have and how do we allocate those resources? However, like somebody else said before, and the mayor as well, mayor put a lot of the data in place that really is concerning about what's going to happen for our city. And it's very important that we keep those services here. And I know a business decision is, is easy to make, and it were hard to make sometimes, where you have to cut, cut services, but I think on the legislative side, we need to have our legislature and our senators, everybody working to bring resources back to our community. And I understand the need that the hospital has, that they're trying to make a bottom line as well, but we need to also figure out, how do we bring those resources back? And your, and your job is to try to keep that in our presence. So kind of bring it back to personal, personal level. My son was born here in Lemonster Hospital, and I see the difference from when he was born there in 92 to the services that are now lacking over there. And I really want to thank all the nurses for all their support and their help. It's very needed there. And I think they're understaffed, and that's an understatement. So we're already cutting more services, already they're understaffed. My wife was over there a couple of months ago, dying of pneumonia, and we were there till 3:00 in the morning, and we had to leave and go to another, another location so that she could get taken care of. Because we were left in the hallway of, of the hospital. So that is unconscionable, to have services here, that we could have services and, and we're not... So it's beyond just the closing one, one type of service. It's more than that. It's, it's all the services that are needed and the lack of services that are had, the lack of support. The chief said it very clearly that we're going to end up having to tax our local police, our local ambulance services, because there's not going to be that resource. People are going to call, pick up the phone, and go, hey, have an ambulance pick me up and take me to where we need to be. But I'm, I'm originally from Costa Rica, and our transportation system is a lot better than here as far as like public transportation. You can get on a bus and you can go to the hospital. You can get on a bus and you can be, you know, taken care of pretty easily close by. Here, it's, it's a lot more difficult. And I have students that come to the Mount where I teach economics, and a lot of times, sometimes they can't make it to school because the, the bus doesn't drop them off on time for, for their class. So we need to also think about what are the, what are the taxing on the infrastructure that we have on, as well as on the transportation system that we need. So it's beyond just the, the hospital closing. It's more than that. It's also looking at what are the services that we need. The, the chief of police mentioned something, and I think not, I don't think any, I heard anyone mention this, was the opioid epidemic that we're having. That's taxing us already in our city. And we're having to, you know, where do those people end up going is to Lemonster Hospital, right? So that's bringing a lot more resources that, that are being taxed as it is. And if we're going to solve that problem, we're going to need a lot more resources than, than what's being thrown at this. We need to have our hospitals' presence. We need to have Burbank open. We need to have Lemonster open. We have the Clinton open. So let's find a way, thank you, let's find a way to, to find those dollars and resources to keep those hospitals, our services here and open. And to wrap it up, I'll just say, you know, just, I guess I'm the last one here, but thank you very much to everybody, and thank you to the nurses and for all their hard work. It's one of our best kept secrets, right? I was a CNA, so I worked in the nursing field for a while, and now I'm teaching in business. But I think without them, we wouldn't have the services that we do need, and we need to have more of them, not less of them. So, thank you.
Our next, our next speakers will be Mike Terrara, followed by Brenda Hancock.
How's it going? I didn't plan on speaking today. I have never gone to any of these ever before in my entire life. I've lived in Lemonster all my life except for when I moved to Pittsburgh, so I've been here in this community since I've been born. Couple of points that everybody's been making, been really good points. The points that the hospital seems to be making are very business-related in a for-profit way, when they are specifically stating they're not-for-profit. It seems a little, little counterintuitive if you are a nonprofit that is seeking to help the community, and you seem to be not helping the community by cutting services. They keep on mentioning mileage, that there's so many places that are so close. But we're in Massachusetts. Nothing is measured in mileage. It's measured in time distance. How long does it take at 5:00 in the afternoon to go from the center of Lemonster to the center of Pittsburgh? It's not 4.9 miles. It's 25 minutes. Now granted, it was 1,800 when they designed the roads, and those guys didn't like each other, so we're screwed with that, and we have to live with it. But at no point is it a five-minute commute if you're in, on Ashburnham Hill, you know, up in Pittsburgh to go to Lemonster. There's no way. It's a 4.5-mile journey. It's half an hour, 45 minutes with traffic. And it's one city away. What about cities that are two, three, four cities away from Lemonster? All the stats they keep getting saying are three-years-ago stats. Three years ago, three years ago, this, this, this. Well, according to all of the nurses that are coming up, that I'm assuming are speaking the truth, because they're nurses, why would they lie? As opposed to the, as opposed to the administration, which is pushing for this. What's the, what's, what's the reason three years? Well, three years ago is when they started manipulating the data to fit what they needed. Four and five years ago, six years ago, give me that stat right there. Give me the three years before you started manipulating the data as to how busy it actually was. And then kicking patients to other hospitals. Sure, it's going to, you know, alleviate the, you know, the lack of Burbank Hospital, but what about all the other hospitals? Do they have the ability to take the load that we apparently don't want? Okay, we can go to Marlboro, 45-minute drive. We can go to, you know, to Worcester. Can they even handle that? Is that going to be the straw, like, this is this hospital. What's a, you know, next year Haywood has to close. Where are you going to go then? At what point is the straw breaking the camel's back? At what point does Worcester say, hey, we can't handle the load from Lemonster anymore? What's going on? Marlboro, we can't handle the load from Lemonster either. Where are you going to go? You have to go to Boston? You're going to have to go to Children's Hospital now because everybody else is starting to close their doors because they're going for a maximum amount of profit? I don't see it. Honestly, I have this bit of cynicism that nothing anybody is saying here today is going to change anyone's mind, honestly. We've seen it before where thousands of people voice their displeasure at something, and the one person in power is like, oh, screw you. So there's a quarter million people in north-central Massachusetts. There is over 100,000 people just within spitting distance of Lemonster and Pittsburgh. You want them to go half, half an hour, 45 minutes away with life-changing issues? I don't see it. I don't see it. That's all I got to say.
My name is Brenda Hancock. I am a medical assistant at Burbank Urgent Care as well as Lemonster, and I'm a horrible public speaker, so I apologize. Thank you, may I ask, for everything that you said. I just wanted to bring a couple of points. The OD epidemic. The problem at Burbank Urgent Care is, with the ODs, is they're any time of any day on the weekends. They're horrible. We've had multiple. CareWell, CareWell sends us so many patients that they can't handle. And the patients, since this has happened, have come into Burbank questioning, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? We don't have a credit card. We don't have the money to take a cab to Lemonster. What are we going to do? So I would just like to invite everyone to come and sit at Burbank Urgent Care for a day and talk to our patients. Thank you.
The last speaker on our list is Brianna Penner, and after that, we'll call anyone who hasn't spoken, who would like to speak. Brianna Penner? If Brianna's not here, is there anyone who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? If you would, please come to the podium and introduce yourself. Yeah, we'll take folks one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mark Silberberg, and my comments are directed specifically to the cardiac rehab program that's being modified pretty drastically. We heard some statistics from the administration earlier about the cardiac rehab center, saying that the number is dwindling. It's down to six to seven a day. I'd like to apply the I test, being a participant in the program. The I test says that there are multiple three classes a day, and there are six to 10 people in the class every day. And that's not counting the Phase 2 program. So I don't know where the dwindling number comes from and where the six to seven only a day comes from, when the I test says there's a lot more. Another I test around that statistic is that about two years ago, maybe a little longer, we, they had, the hospital had to double the amount of parking spaces for the cardiac rehab because there wasn't enough parking, because it was an overflow. Here we are today. We go there multiple times a week, and there's still no parking because the spaces are full. How can that be with a dwindling program? Doesn't make any sense. Another I test is that the hospital is dedicated to having a, a particular priority on certain portions of the community, specifically non-English-speaking and elderly, or older adults, I should say. If you look, the I test says, if you look at the cardiac rehab program, I think older adults is a good way to categorize most of the participants in the program. So why are we canceling the program? And also, there is a translator there who translates for people on an ongoing basis. So serving those two populations, I think, is important in maintaining the program. And finally, for us that are in the maintenance program, the Medicaid/Medicare problem doesn't exist because we pay for this program on our own, out of our own pockets every month. So please keep the program going. Thank you.
Melissa Bible. I'm a Lemonster resident, mom of four children, three with special needs, and one I refer to should live in bubble wrap. Utilization has dropped at UMass because UMass has transferred children out of Lemonster. A half-hour ride to families that are low-income in a service area that does not have consistent regional transportation is cool. Anyone that thinks Emerson Hospital is a close 34-minute ride does not regularly drive Route 2. As a volunteer doula at Haywood Hospital, I can tell you, at 1:00 in the morning, it takes 27 minutes to get from my house in Lemonster to Haywood Hospital. Again, not a close drive with no transport, with no traffic. Because of the significant wait time at Lemonster and lack of pediatric triage, many times people do travel to Worcester when accessible. UMass has set up this utilization themselves. It is absolutely years in the making. UMass is making their way of cutting off the lifeline to local, accessible, family-based services. Four years ago, my infant had a seizure, and it was a mild seizure. I'd unfortunately been through it before. And after eight hours in the emergency room, we were told we were being transferred to UMass. At 10:00 at night, we arrived in UMass. He was hooked up to the monitors. We saw the nurse. At 6:00 AM, we had rounds, and we were discharged. I had to wait another eight hours for my husband to get out of work. We had to pay for transportation. We had to pay for parking. I waited 24 hours without a meal. My one-year-old had a popsicle and Cheerios. We had money. We had accessibility, but I didn't have a purse. I didn't have a credit card. I didn't have a car because we'd gone by ambulance, and that's the system that we're setting up by sending families for non-emergency services to UMass. And that was four years ago. I would like to see UMass answer questions about how it will provide accessibility to care to families that are low-income. How will it assist with transportation, parking, meals when children are hospitalized 30 miles from home and have no resources available to help them? Lemonster's expanding its ER. If it would expand the ER to include pediatric triage and stop transferring kids out, there would not be the hospital-made decline in utilization. Lastly, I wanted to say that both of my parents worked at Lemonster Hospital their entire adult lives. Over 70 years of service between the two of them. They took pride in the community resource that Lemonster Hospital was. My dad used to give tours to first graders of the radiology unit so that they knew what the radiology room was like, and they were without fear if they ever had to go. They still have pride in their community and in their community hospital. We still, as family members, know a lot of the staff that are radiologists and nurses. Because it used to be that when you worked at Lemonster Hospital, your family was a part of the Lemonster Hospital family. It's truly shameful what UMass has done to the staff, the environment, and the morale here. It is absolutely a matter of public health that DPH denied this plan.
My name, my name is Dave Catalini. I live in Lemonster. A few weeks after my second heart attack in 2006, I started the exercise program at Cardiac Rehabilitation Center, Lemonster Hospital, so that I could develop and maintain heart health habits. I've been attending the class twice a week ever since. Cardiac and pulmonary rehab is more than a place to exercise. It's a place, it's a place where people who have similar conditions meet to discuss their roles to better heart and pulmonary health. The exercise room beams with camaraderie, where all the participants strive for the common goal. At times, we may discuss cardiac, pulmonary, or general health issues with each other, or at other times, it may be a forum for non-medical or personal issues we may have. The nurses and exercise technicians who assist us are passionate about their work. They exhibit total dedication to our better health, but taking complete interest in how we are progressing. They counsel us on any symptoms or concerns we may have, instruct us on proper health of pulmonary care, discuss proper dietary measures, call out physicians for recent lab tests, and discuss the results with us. Some of us have been relying on the cardiac rehab lifeline for many years. The closure would have a tremendous negative impact if these programs ended, not only on the participants, but also on their families and the general community as well. Due to our heart and pulmonary issues, some of us did not get around very well. If these programs at Lemonster Hospital ended, and were moved to a facility in another city or town, the result would have, would be a dramatic decrease in accessibility. Participants will be forced to discontinue the programs because of the additional and sometimes difficult winter travel that would be needed to attend such programs, programs that are vital to our sustained health. The mission statement of Health Alliance Hospital for claims, quote, "UMass Memorial Health Care is committed to improving the health of the people of our diverse communities of central New England through culturally sensitive excellence in clinical care, service, teaching, and research," unquote. teaching, and research," unquote. How does the hospital expect to improve the health of the people through service if it discontinues those services to the people whose health is supposed to improve? The Leominster Hospital Cardiac and Pulmonary Rehab Program serve the community. It's been part of our routines for many years, and we feel that a closure would be disservice to us to attend, to us who attend. For the sake of our community, and for those who have benefited from these very necessary and effective programs, ones which have served hundreds of patients and their families over the years, we, the undersigned members of either cardiac or pulmonary programs, oppose the proposed discontinuation of cardiac/pulmonary rehabilitation at Leominster Hospital, implore you not, and implore you not to shut them down.
My name's Nicole. First, I want to thank everybody, Miley? I'm a new employee between UMass in Worcester and UMass here in Leominster. First, I want to thank the people in our community, and my fellow nurses, and community members who have spoke here today about these proposed closures. I wasn't planning to say anything, but like, there's a lot of things that I've heard that is just rather upsetting to me, that I just need to say something about, because there was a consistent talk and approach about distance to all of these places where you have to pay, aside from Burbank Urgent Care, before you receive any services, and I really don't feel that people that are saying these things really recognize the kind of community and the kind of people that we serve, in this community, that we serve as healthcare providers. Not everybody has access to a car that can get them from Leominster to Marlborough, to Worcester, to Boston, to Emerson. I'm fortunate enough to even have a car, to not have to drive with oxygen, to not have to worry too, too much, and I've gone those distances to Marlborough, to Worcester, from this town, and I don't find it feasible to expect the people of our community to do the same, especially where they're, they're limited as it is now. Also, I had heard some things about the closure of pediatrics, because the lack of skill among the nurses, or lack of pediatric admissions to maintain skills among the nursing, but I'm just going to say, from my own standpoint, that I think that when it comes to maintaining skills, you need to have a strong educator in the hospital to maintain nursing education, as well as a strong orientation program in curriculum for new hires in maintaining current staff education and training. That's something that should be set in place in every hospital, and I can say that it's not at Leominster Hospital. Also, the other thing I wanted to ask about was, like, moving pediatrics and cardiac rehab to places like Worcester, or to Marlborough, or to Boston, and I can say specifically, like, towards Worcester. So you want to send people from our emergency room to all these places that already don't have guaranteed beds to see these people, so you're not, you're not, you're not going to have them wait in our ER, but you're going to send them to Worcester's ER, or Emerson's ER, where there isn't even a guaranteed bed there for these people? And cardiac rehab in Marlborough, what's going to be cut next? Is it going to be maternity services here in Leominster? There's already not any of that in Marlborough Hospital. You know, I just, I just wanted to know really what's next? Because you're getting rid of our urgent care, you're getting rid of our pediatrics and 10-bed MedSurg unit, you're getting rid of cardiac rehab, which it's very clear is critical to people in this community, and this is just a handful of people. So what's next? That's just my, what's, what's going to really do it? What's going to help your budget? What's next? Is, is cutting two nurses on one unit to keep it open every day of the week for 365 years, days a year for pediatrics, for example, because you need two nurses to have an open unit? Is that really going to help to fix your deficit? I mean, is that, is really cutting these services that people are paying out of their pocket really going to help your deficit? I mean, I, I just don't understand it. And yeah, 2.4 miles and 18 miles, like, I live here in this town, you know, I live literally 2.5 probably miles down the street, and do you know how long it takes me in my car to get me from point A to point B? And that's not, that's not, you know, like, this evening, I was lucky to get here on time, because I had childcare issues, but like, how about during rush hour? How about Route 2 during rush hour? My husband travels on that interchange all the time for work, and let me tell you, Route 2, to try to get to Concord during rush hour, if there's an emergency, even in an ambulance? Come on. What about the people in this community? That's all I really have to say.
Hi, I'm Anthony Zarella, I'm a Fitchburg City Councilor, and I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. Normally, I'd be here in a suit, and I say that for a reason. Ladies and gentlemen of DPH, I'd like you to just look around for a moment at where we are, in the ballroom of the Sheraton. I mean, DoubleTree, it's the Sheraton to everyone around here. And look at most of the speakers, aside from our excellent nurses, there've been people in nice suits and sharp blouses, and for us, absolutely, Worcester can be within our service area. I could hop in the car and make it to Worcester in 20 minutes. I could. And we could use CareWell as an adequate substitute, because we have credit cards and flexible insurance. But the people, all the people who've spoken tonight didn't come here to speak up for the people in nice suits. They came here to speak for the people who will never be in the ballroom at the Sheraton, and who may never own a nice suit. And for those people, Worcester and Marlborough and Concord are just out of the question. And we can't calibrate our standard of what constitutes healthcare accessibility by looking to me, and to you, and to the other people in nice suits, as the yardstick of what does and doesn't work. They're not our target population here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Norma Kelly, and I am an employee of the Health Alliance Burbank Radiology Department. I have been employee there for 41 years. I'm just speaking on the behalf of the urgent care presently, and as a radiology tech, our department is right by the entrance to the urgent care. And there have been many times in the recent time period that we have seen ambulances coming up to the urgent care door because of overdoses that have been coming. We have seen times when the nurses and the doctor have gone out to the vehicles when a patient has been brought there for an overdose, and they rush out there with Narcan, and they have saved those patients' lives. Now, if they were rushed to CareWell's, I don't know if that would be the same situation at that point. I don't know what services they provide for patients that may be overdosed, but I have seen it with my own eyes, the number of patients that have been saved through the Burbank Urgent Care. I feel that because Burbank has been a hospital for so many years, that even when they transitioned to the urgent care, for many residents, they still seek us out as their primary care provider during those emergency times. We still do get patients that come for chest pains. We have not been in ER for many years, and I feel that we have provided that care until the ambulance has come, until they get transported to the Leominster ER. When they talk about our numbers, it appears that our patient numbers have gone down in volume, but even if they list it as 26 patients per day on an average, if you multiply that by seven days a week, that's 182 patients. If you multiply that by 52 weeks, that gives you 9,464 patients a year that won't be seen at the Burbank Urgent Care if it closes. So the alternatives they have are the urgent care in Leominster, which I hear is already a very busy place, and the CareWell, which I'm not quite sure how many patients they see, but are they ready to take on that total number of patients that are being seen at the Burbank Urgent Care at this time? I'm not sure that I feel that they are ready to manage the increase in numbers of patients if our urgent care were to close. I feel that in the patients that I've spoke to in the past weeks since we have heard the announcement of the urgent care at Burbank closing, most of the patients I've spoke to don't get the newspaper. Most of the patients have never even heard that it was being closed. So I just feel that they're talking of closing this by the end of September. I just foresee that at some point that there may be an emergency that won't be handled, and that maybe there will be some lives that will be lost, because there are people out there that don't get this information firsthand. A lot of them don't have doctors, and they are just relying on how things went in the past of us providing the kind of services that they needed. As far as the pediatricist though, my daughter was a patient in the pediatric department twice. We had to have overnight stays. We went through the emergency first, and she had to stay overnight at the hospital. Both those times when we stayed overnight, we were in the pediatric department. I can't imagine that the process now of being held overnight in the emergency room would give any pediatric patient the same area of, if you want to say, restfulness. I do find that it's hard to rest in the hospital, I've been a patient myself. I don't know where they plan on putting the pediatrics holding room, but I know that there is always things going on in the emergency room, as well as behavioral health holdovers. So if my granddaughter now would need services in pediatrics, I would be concerned that she might be close by some of these behavioral health patients. Maybe they have a different plan, which I have not heard of, but I just feel that as a whole, that some of these services really need to be looked at again, and that we need to have better answers on how these alternatives are really going to work out for our, our families. Thank you.
My name is Claire Frida, Leominster City Councilor at large. I came here tonight to listen. I knew there was a lot of concern in the community, but as I'm listening, I happen to be here many years ago, when there was a concern with, was Leominster going to keep their hospital? Was Burbank going to keep their hospital? Was Fitchburg going to be the, the spot where the hospital was? We had nurses from Burbank that were arguing with nurses from Leominster. Everybody was afraid of losing their job. The communities were afraid of losing their hospital. The discussions were based on, was Leominster Hospital going to go to a profit or a nonprofit? What does the community want? I'm hearing a lot of the same things tonight, and it's bothering me, because it took a long time to get out of that mindset. Fitchburg and Leominster were battling with each other, because each community thought they should have, rightly so, what they deserved in a community hospital. I think everybody needs to, we heard nurses tonight that had some incredible points. Who knows better than what they do, because they're working it every day? We have the administration that knows they have some serious issue. We have legislators that know what they, what they can do, and what they can't do. Everybody needs to sit together and talk about this, and come up with some ideas. Maybe the nurses have some really good ideas that the hospital could put into play, or try something, or at least have the conversation, because it sounds like nobody really had the conversation. And this is, this is serious to all of us, the urgent care, the pediatrics, the cardiac, it's important to all of us. So if DPH has got any kind of recommendations, I would hope that there'd be a couple of roundtable discussions, with a lot of people being able to put their ideas and their practices on the table, and, and try to come up with a solution. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else at this point who would like to speak?
My name is Dr. Paul Migliozzi, and I'm a resident of Fitchburg, and I just have a couple of questions I would like to ask. Someone has the information that I'm looking for, I would appreciate it, and a couple of comments. Number one, I'd like to know what constitutes urgent care? Number two, how large of a facility are we speaking of, or talking about, at Burbank Hospital? Is it half of the building? Is it, you know, 5,000 square feet? What are the questions here? Number two, is there anyone here that would have an emergency or an urgent crisis that would entrust themselves to carry or to transport someone to the hospital? Isn't that what ambulance services are for? What if you get in your car and you develop a flat tire on the way? Are you going to be responsible for that? How would you feel about that? What if you're transporting your father, he's having a heart attack, and he has a cardiac arrest in the car? Do you have the necessary medications, the IV, to help him? I don't think so. I know ambulance services that could make it from the center of Fitchburg downtown to Leominster in about five minutes, unless you get in their way. How about considering a downtown or inner-city neighborhood, community center? Have the city manager design a building, instead of walking up the steep hills at Burbank? Would anybody here walk up the steep hill at Burbank with tachycardia? You would? You would walk up, okay, you would walk up to Burbank Hospital with tachycardia? Then I would say that, I think that you need some, really, you need some counseling there, okay? Maybe from your physician, yeah, yeah. So that's all I have to say. Number two, I own my own business, and you don't run or operate a business with your heart, because if you do, you won't be in business very long, okay? And since the medical profession, or health profession, was reclassified from a profession to an industry, yes, you do have to look at the financial status. If you're not making a profit, you're not going to be able to give your nurses a raise. You'll have to let some go, okay? You need to consider very carefully your finances, obviously, and if you don't have the right patient population to support you, you're going to, you're going to go out of business. In the past 15 years, there's been over 120 rural hospitals that have closed throughout the country. That's factual. Make a bow. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else at this point that would like to speak? On behalf of the Department of Public Health, I want to thank everyone for their participation in this evening's hearing. The Department appreciates
The Department appreciates you taking time to share with us your comments and suggestions on this matter. As I previously indicated, the Department will make a determination as to whether the service to be discontinued is necessary for preserving access and health status in the hospital's service area within 15 calendar days of this hearing and notify the hospital of its determination. If the Department finds that the service to be discontinued is necessary for preserving access and health status, the Department will require the hospital to submit a written plan for assuring access to this service within 15 calendar days of the Department's notification. This concludes the Department's hearing. Thank you for your time today.[1787.88][1787.88](APPLAUSE).